So, second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we have ordinance, ordinance number sixty-four. Scott, can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. The addition is accept whether the owner who was revoked pursuant to section nine point oh two nine C is the owner of the premises then this provision shall not apply and the license shall terminate. So, in other words, if the buyer owner is the one who gets the license, does not operate, you revoke for non-operation, that person can't come back for the next ninety days and get a license because they're the ones who screwed up. So, that's all that does. Not that such a thing would ever happen this week.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval, but I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Weigl, on my second, Alderman Weigl.
Scott, when you say the owner, so oftentimes an owner would set up a corporation, so are we gonna, does it occur to me a difference if it's an individ- if the property's in an individual's name and but the situation- Which makes that problem every time when somebody's moved and you just, it's called piercing the corporate veil. It's just a sham corporation that's set up there to, and if that's the individual who's there, the, the case laws refer that we can just ignore that and say it's, it's you, John Smith. We don't care that you created John Smith Incorporated to run the buyer, it's still one of the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we have sixty-six. Sixty-six, sixty-eight. Let's do sixty-six.
Move approval on item number sixty-six.
Subject to necessary requirements. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just request that the operator Tolstein be held for an appearance.
They're in here?
Uh, no, for a future appearance.
Okay, right.
Brandon.
Okay, so...
Yes.
I'll, I'll, do an amendment to my motion, or we just accept that?
We already voted, well, okay.
And I'll second, I'll amend my second to sixty-six minus Tolstein.
Friendly amendments.
Okay, so we have, so do we have a motion subject to necessary requirements as amended? Or do we need to vote on the?
Amendment.
On the, I move for approval of the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And now do we have a motion?
On the amendment, or on the motion, on, on?
The motion as amended.
Motion as amended.
As amended, move approval of the licenses subject to-
Second. Subject to necessary requirements, second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, okay, item number sixty-eight, this is for look your license for approval. We already, okay.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then we have item number sixty-nine, communication to place on file.
Move to place on file, second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have number seventy-eight, no communications.
Move to place on file, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I haven't been down that way lately, has there been any progress on it totally, has everybody been down there?
Uh, this doesn't have anything to do with that building, well, it doesn't, I guess it does, you know. Uh, yes, they are working on it.
Oh, okay.
They're wider, they are, they tore out the windows and they got, they poured them back out of course, but I've seen people working there. They still got all the limousines parked out there, but yes, they're working on it.
Well, and, and, Mr. Chair, if I could, I mean, he explained why he did that because he was using the limousines to actually be like barricades to keep people from just parking cars on there with for sale signs on them or like this.
Right.
Which has been a problem in the Highway one hundred corridor.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That's all we have.
Move adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call Administration of Finance to order, all five members are present, starting on our agenda with item nineteen, an ordinance to amend subsections of the city of West Dallas provided municipal code increasing the crash billing fee from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion from Alderman Weigl, second from Alderman May, is there any discussion?
Okay.
Alderman Weigl, or, sure, oh, were you, were you being chair?
No.
I gave the chair over.
Okay, Alderman Weigl.
Um, so the way I read this, no matter who's at fault, we bill, we would be billing every, conceivably if there's a twelve car accident in the city of West Dallas, including maybe even on the freeway-
Can you come here and sit here, please?
You got it. And none of the cars involved were registered in the city of West Dallas, and we gotta come up and clean up a mess, it is a twelve car accident, we could charge them six, five hundred dollars every car regardless of who's at fault, we don't, we don't get into determination of who's at fault.
Correct.
Now, this typically, I'm gonna guess, gets paid by someone's insurance, hopefully?
Yes.
I mean, do we, do we have a record on that, I mean, how often that happens?
I talked about this with Chief Buller before coming to the meeting a few days ago, he said it's, uh, once or twice a month that someone will claim, uh, that they can't have it covered under their insurance and will ask for some sort of variance in the city's position as Ben, it's a, it's a municipal code and, and it, we really don't grant variances on it, so if they're making that claim once or twice a month, sometimes it's probably just because they don't wanna deal with the insurance hassle, so I would imagine that it's even less than that, that it actually can't go to insurance.
So, so there's, it's altogether possible there are people who are involved in an accident and there's no real substantial damage to their car, so they're not dealing with their insurance and they're dealing with insurance exclusively for the purpose of coming up with this two fifty, possibly being five hundred dollars.
I believe that is conceivable and I believe if that happens, then their insurance company will then be in contact with the insurance company, whoever's at fault.
Eventually, eventually it goes to whoever's at fault.
Eventually, they'll work it out.
Yeah, eventually it's their fault.
But I understand it can be a headache for someone who's in that position, I, I understand your point.
I, I like the fact that you included what our neighboring communities are billing and then some sort of justification for going up in the pricing over the years, 'cause it's, you know, it's been, it's a steady, forever longer we're doing it, it's been two fifty and obviously costs go up, you know, it just seems to me like a big jump and, you know, and the idea that every car, and I, and we leave it to the, the system, essentially the insurance system, to sort out who it falls on, so again, if a car causes a s- twelve car pileup on the freeway, I guess I don't know how often that one car is blamed for that, a bunch, probably a bunch of following too closely or inattentives or speeding, but conceivably this could add another six, six grand if somebody's, assuming that none of them are residents and-
It could, I think a, a key point though to remember is that first of all, nothing happens if all we, well, not all we do, but if our actions are limited to providing medical care or simply responding to the scene, it's if we're cleaning up fluid, putting out a, a fire related to it, something like that, I think a, a key point to remember is if, the more vehicles that are involved, the more resources they're going to need to be out there, a single engine company can't deal with the cleanup from a twelve car pileup.
I guess that's all I needed, though.
Alderman, and so we, we will be doing this on the freeways as well?
Yeah, I've-
In the city of West Dallas?
In the city, yes, this, the ordinance doesn't say otherwise.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is merely changing the amount.
Yes, we already do this.
So, yeah.
You know, prior to what it was, okay.
Any further discussion, Mr. Chair? Alderman Weigl. We wouldn't do this like in a parking lot at a strip, uh, say Home Depot, there's an accident and you're called out, is that doing?
A truck full of cheese starts on fire.
Well, no, but I guess, I guess if there's a fuel spill in a, if there's a fuel spill in a, in a parking lot, we still deal with it, right?
Yeah.
So, this isn't just in the city right away or public domain, public space, this is, this would be on private property.
No. Wherever the vehicles end up, sometimes it's in the living room of a home.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, item, we're gonna go backward, we're gonna go to item seventeen, which is a joint referral, a joint resolution with Administration of Finance and Public Works, yeah, thank you, Assistant Chief Sharpenberg, I had trouble with that, Assistant Chief Sharpenberg, thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What is this for, we need a parapet wall, what does it have, anything to do with that fire a couple of years ago?
And I guess I'd like to, I went on that mic as-
Yeah, Jim, we'd like you to come forward, please, and have a seat at the table.
Yes, Mike is over in the other.
And then tell us who you are also for our record, since we're recording.
And the home audience. Jim Lou, Lead Superintendent for DPW.
Uh, Mike briefed me on this in case there should be a, a question of that, uh, this is for the yard building, some, some minor, like, but even though it's twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, for some roof repairs up there, obviously due to, to water leaks, it's a temporary, or I should say an interim fix for what really needs to be done up there, so it's, it's a stopgap measure, so to speak, just to, to tide us over up there, so, and Mike had mentioned that there's six hundred thousand dollars in the capital account, this would be twenty-four thousand out of that account.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Alderman May.
So, you, you mentioned it's a stopgap for emergency repair, i- it seemed like it, from the description in the, in the letter, that it was a, an emergency, but ultimately we're gonna have to repair the roof.
Exactly.
Is that in our capital improvement plan, I don't see it, repairing the roof?
There's a portion, there was a three, I think it was gonna be done in three parts.
Okay.
So, I believe the third part is in the plan, I'd have to look to be sure.
So, so one-third of it is in the plan? And this, this is, repairs across the whole roof, miscellaneous repairs?
Yeah, this is, my understanding right now, yes, is, is what needs to be done right now, especially going into the season that we're, we're going into with the winter, and, uh, yeah, just to carry it, carry things through, right, exactly, until they can, can follow through on their, their, their plan that they've got lined up.
And Rebecca, do you remember off the top of your head what that might have been that cost? I really-
Three hundred, a one hundred, okay.
It was one hundred thousand to do the, one-third of the roof? Would it be easier just to do the hundred thousand now? And save the twenty-four? What was that?
One hundred is the request for eighteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Would it be easier just to authorize the hundred thousand and save the twenty-four?
The hundred is a third of the roof, this is repairs over the entire roof, correct?
No.
Right now, the, my understanding of the twenty-four right now is, is a stopgap as far as what the total repair is, you know, to cover everything on there, that I'm not aware of the timeframe, right there that they've got lined up, because I know it was in stages and that there has been some work done, and so I'm not sure if this would be, you know, if we've gotta go with the stage two and then stage three, and this is just to get us into next year, into twenty eighteen where that's budgeted for.
Mr. Chair? I think the question is, does this cover miscellaneous repairs over the entire roof, or is it in one area?
No, this is, this is one particular area that there's a problem, right there, uh, Mike did show me some pictures and, uh, I, I don't have them with me, but he did point out the pictures right there, and I'm not sure if they were in the, in the report with this right here for the twenty-four thousand, if there was something included, attachment wise, uh, but yeah, he showed the area right there that was deteriorated.
It also includes the wall, too.
Yeah, yep, there's some wall, some, some wall in the area, yep, here.
And I looked up what parapet means.
I know the parapet wall.
Do you, okay.
I mean, high wall. I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe instead of authorizing the twenty-four, we authorize the amount to repair that section of the roof plus whatever for the parapet, to see, it sounds like it would save us money.
So, here's the other thing, though, that we haven't discussed, is we need to decide do we, where we go with that entire Public Works facility, are we going to be spending more money, uh, a hundred thousand dollars and maybe building a new building or not?
Okay, buy building for a hundred K, I think we should have that.
No, right, you can't do that, I, I think that's where this twenty-four thousand comes from.
Right, I'm just saying if we're to spend a hundred thou, we're authorized a hundred thousand and through our budget process and they're gonna go out there in spring and repair the roof anyway, why are we putting twenty-four thousand towards it this year plus another hundred thousand in spring? It seems like we've just added twenty-five percent approximately to our budget cost.
I think that it's literally leaking right now, so it's coming down and damaging our equipment.
Is the problem, you have to get bids for that hundred thousand, is that the issue?
I'm not sure about that.
I'm not sure if they, if they've gone out to-
Well, that's why, that's why I noticed it's twenty-four, the limit on bids is twenty-five. I just don't wanna waste money on a repair if we could just fix it, if we're already gonna authorize it for next year hypothetically, anyway, to fix that whole section of the roof, then just do it.
No, just a thought here, I could go down and see if Mike would have a minute where he could maybe come in and add something to this.
That might be worth it.
You know what I mean, because he, he's really got the, the, the knowledge of this, so why don't I go down, I'll see if Mike is free, if that's possible.
If we table it for a second?
Sure, that, that, that sounds good, or-
You know, that way you'd get all the information that you need.
Very good. Okay, Alderman Chappleski, do you wanna make your point or wait for Mr. Lewis to accept?
Uh, Michael probably make my point.
Yeah, all right, yeah, we'll wait for you to come back with the boss. All right, then moving on to item twenty, ordinance to amend the city's salary schedule due to four recent reclassifications.
Move approval.
Uh, motion, sir, second. Have a second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-one, a resolution relative to continuing contract with workforce help.
Move approval.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Wrote. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item twenty-two, resolution to approve year twenty eighteen operating plan for downtown West Dallas Business Improvement District.
Second.
We have a motion from Alderman Weigl and a second from Alderman Chappleski, and is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And item twenty-three, resolution approving two-year extension amendment intergovernmental emergencies.
Move approval.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Weigl, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Yeah, a second from Alderman May, go, Alderman May.
If we could have the Assistant Chief come up.
I had a feeling.
Thought just where you thought you were.
In, in light of discussions in the city of Milwaukee about the possible closure of five stations.
Six.
Six? Last I heard it was five, six stations, a couple of them being close to us, and the fact that we're probably gonna be doing more runs as a result of that, based on my conversations with the chief, how does this money get divvied out, and is it based on those six stations being closed, that, that is, if the city moves forward with that and we wait on this, would we get a bigger piece of the pie?
The answer is no, because this is only based on paramedic units, Milwaukee's not closing any paramedic units, they're simply redistributing a few.
Because they get money on paramedic units.
Well, and they're moving a paramedic unit to our border.
Okay.
Potentially for that reason.
They're gonna be fishing in our pond.
So, there is a, well, they're not gonna let us fish as often in theirs. Uh, at the end of the day, we will probably see a net decrease in call volume based on what Milwaukee's doing.
Okay.
But no, it does, it's really not germane to this contract.
Okay. And then in general, is it, would it be possible, it's a little off topic, to have the chief come in and explain what's going on with that, and how that, the closures in Milwaukee will affect us?
He'd probably ask me to do it, so I can-
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we could have him come in in the future.
Sure, I think it's all pretty preliminary, I, I see that as, I don't think Milwaukee's gonna close six stations there, it's, yeah, and then they'll come down with something more reasonable, but-
We'll know middle of November.
Okay.
Yeah.
At some point, if we could have him come in.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Sure. All right, any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thanks.
Yep, no problem, should I stay?
And, uh-
Yeah, he puts stuff on his agenda if he goes to Germany.
He does. Yeah, you guys wanna buy some cars, item twenty-four, a resolution authorizing a purchase of three twenty eighteen all-wheel-drive Ford utility interceptor SUVs for the fire department, not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
A motion from Alderman May.
Second.
Second from Alderman Wrote, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigl.
Um, I look at the capital improvement plan we have, and the police department has vehicle replacement in the capital improvement plan where it belongs, are these cars being replaced unexpectedly?
No.
And I see the source of funding is the salary account.
Yep.
Okay, so, why don't we just budget that in the replacement vehicle account rather than using something that was meant for something else to pay for these?
Because we're in a very unique position right now, where we've had, we are in the middle of, toward the tail end, of a very heavy period of turnover, so at the moment thirty-two percent of the fire department staff have less than five years on the job, a rookie fire-
At the beginning of a period of turnover.
Well, we're closing it out, a couple more years, we'll be wrapping it up, so essentially a third of the department is not yet fully paid, so what that means is we have some salary funding, because people are getting paid slightly less because of the step increments than their positions are budgeted for, which means we have a little flexibility with salary money for a very limited window of time, where we can use it creatively to predict future expenses and buy them now, so that when the budget is fleshed out and tight, we're not trying to make these purchases.
But when the budget gets tight again, you're gonna have to be putting, 'cause cars, none of the vehicles ever last forever.
Right.
So, whenever this time is, when you're done hiring, then you're gonna be going to the capital improvement plan to add these cars in there.
Well, we have a line item-
That explains how you got the money, that doesn't explain why the plan for replacing the cars wasn't made the way I think it should be, it, it should be budgeted as what it really should have been, I'm not, not, don't mean to put you in the hot seat, you're in the hot seat, you're not in Germany.
Right.
He's a firefighter, he's used to the hot seat.
Since we re, um, convened the capital improvement committee in a different manner, we're establishing it with vehicles and things like this, this is a kind of a leftover from that.
So, so next year, we'll see a request from the fire department for new vehicles in the capital improvement plan.
We are trying to work with departments to ensure all of those items are adequately, um, um, put forth for the capital improvement committee, so.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alderman.
I, I had actually the same concerns you had, Alderman Weigl, and I had a good conversation with both the chief and our city administrator regarding this, I, I thought this was something that either should be budgeted intentionally in the budget, or the carryovers put in towards capital or whatever else we decide later with carryovers, um, understanding how this was put to, it, it's not like they intentionally didn't fill positions so they could buy capital for themselves, um, I'm okay with it in this scenario, going forward, however, I would like it not to be planned out like this, and just like you said, it has to come through the capital improvements committee or, or done through carryovers that we work through in February or March, so.
For my clarification, we still have a, we have a line item in our budget for, um, an accumulating account for small vehicles, is it, should I take away from this that you'd like to see that done away with, and instead that budgeting take place in the capital improvement plan, 'cause to this point, that's not how we've done it.
Peggy.
Ms. Dino.
Can I talk more about this on Monday, right?
So, yes, yes, that was gonna be my first statement, we'll talk more about it on Monday, but we also have a lot of things in the capital improvement plan right now that are not funded, so we need to talk about some of those accumulation accounts and how we need to handle them, so between now and sixty days when the budget gets approved, those are some of the decisions that the committee is gonna be asked to make as far as, here, here's where we have money availability, here's our, our known needs, how do you wanna proceed with those?
And, Mr. Chair, I, I think that was sort of my concern, is that if we have more pressing needs, like a roof on DPW that could cause a, a safety issue for our employees there, I would think I'd wanna spend that money there first, and that was part of my concern when I had seen this initially, is, is this in line with the priority of the city, and is it in line?
Well, public safety is one of the, is a paramount, um, issue for res, city residents, so I would think that it is, but as I said before, going forward, we'll have these so we can compare in one group versus things coming through the year and, and, um, having to make decisions off-cycle, so.
And I think what happens is, is a lot of times some departments that have leftover money and they think, well, it's ours, well, it's, it's the entire cities, um, and so that was part of my initial concern with this one.
In case it helps with perspective, the three vehicles that would be replaced are two thousand one, two thousand three, and two thousand four respectively, so they range in age from fourteen to nineteen years old by the time we receive them, just so you know, we're not buying vehicles just 'cause we can.
And, and if I recall, in reading it, with some of the things that we're doing with M I H and things, this is actually, it, it has a, a service and a functional need that, that provides some efficiency as well, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. And then, uh, we'll, we'll come back to item seventeen, Mr. Lewis, if you could come forward and join us, uh, we're talking about the, uh, parapet wall roofing repairs in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars, and some of the committee members had some questions for you.
Yeah, so-
Mr. Chair? Alderman.
My question was, instead of spending the twenty-four thousand to repair it, and then another hundred thousand dollars next year to actually do the full-blown repair on that section, why not just come for us now for the full hundred thousand, and let's, let's get the job done, so we're not wasting twenty-four thousand?
Well, this is, there's various portions that I wrote down there, you're talking about the brick parapets in this case, then you're talking about the rubber membrane, the flat portion of the roof out there, what we want, what we're looking to do is just a stopgap measure here to get us out of an immediate problem with the, with the brick parapets down there, and to prevent further damage, especially obviously over the winter here, um, to the brickwork, and to save that, um, yeah, it would be nice to be able to do the whole thing, it'd be nice to do the whole roof, I mean, we're talking about at least a million and a half dollars of roof, roof work down at, at the yard.
Well, that's more than we had heard, so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we've been doing, yeah, we, we've been doing this, we've been doing that, the roof down there was just piecemeal, been a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars here and there, but the overall project down there is, is at least a million and a half dollars, to replace the whole building is fifteen million, million, I mean, so, so you got a big issue, so, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to have the time and, and the funding and do all this stuff together, but this is more of an immediate concern to get us out of a tight spot.
So, it's more of the parapet wall right now, okay, that makes me feel a little better.
Alderman Weigl.
So, this twenty-four is spread over various spots on the roof?
It's about a hundred and, no, it's only about a hundred and forty feet or so, it's the worst part of, it's the worst part of the parapets out there. There's a lot more work, I mean, there's, we're, we're based, we went, what we did here is we went to Menards and they had a sale on duct tape, we bought a bunch of duct tape, we're gonna use it. This is not anything close to what ultimately is needed, all it is is prevent more long-term da- damage and more expense down the, down the road.
And I don't laugh because, yeah, the situation, I laugh 'cause the way you described it, but-
But that's what, that's, that's what we've been doing with that roof down there, and then essentially the whole building, just trying to get it to another year round.
We have a motion and a second for approval, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, thank you.
Ayes have it. Yeah, thanks, Mike. And, item twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Yeah, very nice.
Yeah, that's my commentary, yeah, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Eyes have it? You gentlemen are faster than me all of a sudden. All right, item twenty-six is communications from city administrator recommending the appointment of Mr. Anthony Workacheski for the position of IT director.
If you could hold that for the October ninth meeting?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and that's uh, are also going to be our budget meeting, we will be meeting October ninth as a committee to give everyone a heads up. Sorry, Tony, you don't have a job yet? You're still working. Uh, item twenty-seven, communication from the city administrator requesting approval of fill a vacant position of administrative support assistant in the assessor's office.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Alderman Weigel?
Second.
Second from Alderman Wrote. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Item twenty-eight, uh.
Move approval.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move approval also of twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one?
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for those.
Second.
Yeah. Uh, for thirty and thirty, we have a motion in a second for those three items, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Who wants to approve the budget?
It's a joke.
Yeah.
Deny!
We'll meet at our, our additional meeting.
We have a motion from the mayor.
All right. And uh, item thirty-three is what we're on?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grill.
Rebecca Grill, city administrator, um, the, the attachments include a, an item listed as ten-three-seventeen marked copy of the ordinance to repeal and recreate RMC section two point seven six. This was an update from the last meeting, given the direction from the committee and Alderman Lysak, it includes um the directions given. So. Don't know if there's any more questions, so it basically leaves the civil service commission in effect for grievance procedure.
Okay, um, can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Uh, motion for Alderman May, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Chapuski, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? All right, and item thirty-four is um, a resolution to approve the following policies as listed, and can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion from Alderman Weigel?
Second.
Second from Alderman May? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? And then we have an additional discussion item, it's a discussion and consideration or approval of waiver of insurance requirements for branding and marketing contract with Savage Solutions LLC. Ms. Grill, would you like to tell us about that?
As you recall, in June, I believe sixth, there was approval by the committee and the council to uh enter into a contract with Savage Solutions, we've been working through the contract requirements and then also the insurance requirements. The Savage Solutions is having some, was having some concerns in getting the appropriate insurance and the cost factor for getting the intellectual property. And waiver segregation indicated that was an additional nine thousand four hundred per year, the contract is, I believe, forty-seven fifty, so they're having concerns about that cost versus um the contract and the money they have spent working through the legal paying for the legal fees, working through the, getting our, the contract to a certain point. Regarding the concerns of not having that type of insurance, I would leave that to Scott.
The uh, the RFP required the intellectual property insurance, and, and the reason for that is that we're purchasing intellectual property from them, they're creating intellectual property for us, and uh this isn't something that we thought of, this is best practices, is recommended by SIFMIC. Uh, League of Municipalities Insurance Company recommends the same kind of thing. For example, when we hire a computer consultant and they're providing us with a computer program, we require intellectual property because they're creating a document, we don't want them to steal that thing from somebody else, give it to us, we then get sued because it's been stolen, now we have something we can't use because it violates copyrights. And uh, we can't go anywhere, so it's this same thing here. They now can't do it effectively, and uh, I think the request for you here tonight is, do you wanna go ahead without that uh insurance? And the reason for that insurance is as I've described, and uh, you know, as, as the mayor has related to me, uh when he first heard about this branding type thing, like six, seven years ago, I think the company that was you know showcasing this at, at the convention he was at, uh, then went to six or seven communities, created it. All the same thing, they all started wrestling with each other, that company's now out of business. That's the, that's the thing that we're trying to prevent with, with the intellectual property insurance. You know, if some town in France has the same branding we do, is that gonna be a problem? Probably not, someplace in Michigan, maybe not. But if it's Beaver Dam in West Alz, that had the exact same branding, the exact same slogans, there's probably gonna be a problem. And what's our solution? So that was the reason why we put it in there, that's the problem now, and so uh, the question is, do you just wanna waive that? The other issue that we're having is they haven't provided us with any proof of insurance on anything, their underlying general liability. Uh, I think that's just because they've been held up on this other stuff, but it's been months that we've been asking for it, and they've been saying, look, get it, and we haven't seen it.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Michael?
Uh, not an insurance expert, but obviously a small business owner. So nine thousand dollars a year? Is this based on their history or the general industry history?
I, I, again, you know, none of us are insurance risk providers, but I, I would think that, that they look at the industry and, and what there is and what they're creating. This is probably a high-risk area, when you're branding and stuff for municipalities, how many things can you say that will be different from everybody else? And so that's probably a big part of the problem, is that they all, they tend to sound the same, and then you'll have a copyright claim that, geez, that's ours, or another company that did something for another community, says you stole our idea that we created for some community in South Carolina.
So, they should have known about this upfront when they bid the job?
It was part of the RFP.
And it wasn't, we didn't add something else to the subgr- it was all there, and they're, apparently their lawyer missed it, or whoever wrote the, wrote the bid for us. Or they just thought, oh hell, we'll get them to throw it out?
Oh no, but it was there.
Mr. Chair, I just, um.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you. I guess, I, I don't disagree with what the city attorney is saying, however, I really would like to get this process moving, and you know, like, we referenced this company that had a national image that, you know, replicated their work, and they are out of business, and I look at this as a much smaller firm, it's a much more local firm. They've done work in Oak Creek, they've done work in Waukesha, they've done work in several other communities without this, and I just don't think that they're gonna go charging in and give us a slogan that they're then gonna sell to or, or try to implement in another community, I, I mean, I realize I can't, we can't promise that, but I just, I would ask that you guys consider um waiving that for this, so we can get this process moving, we've done interviews, we've selected a firm, we're, right now, we're behind, I mean, we, we we, being the tourism commission as well as the marketing firm, we're hoping to be farther along in the process right now, and um though that's kinda where I'm coming from.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigel?
This brings me back to my question I asked, is, is, and I don't, maybe nobody in the room knows this answer. Other communities are in the same boat as we are with this tourism hotel room tax, creating visitors, you know, tourism murals and all that stuff. Is, is this insurance request that we're asking of this contractor the same thing that our neighbors are doing? Is our, if, if, if Wal- if Wal- did Walatosa hire somebody to do their marketing with the same insurance requirement? Did Brookfield re- require this of their contractor? You know, and I, and I, I don't know if anybody in this room knows that answer, but.
Yeah, no, nobody does, and they say that nobody else has. Our insurance company, the other municipal insurance companies all recommend this as a practice, we're not unique in that. We didn't come up with this language on our own, uh, I know nothing about intellectual property, I didn't come up with the language. That came from the insurance companies, where they hired an expert to, to craft that kind of stuff. And, and so, yeah, it's an industry standard, and for me, it's like, when, when you're in the business of selling intellectual property to your clients and you don't have intellectual property insurance? It's like you're in the business of having a fleet drive, and you don't have a lot of insurance, it's your main thing, and you don't have that type of insurance to cover. You know, the liability. So what you have to weigh, I think here, is uh, like, like the mayor said, what's, what's the risk here truly? Is it, is worth taking a flyer on that you're, you're gonna get something that's gonna be copied from somebody else?
Mr. Chair? Alderman May?
So what level of coverage are we requiring to have, is it a certain dollar amount of coverage?
It was a million.
It was a million, okay, that's actually pretty normal, so if.
Exactly normal.
That sounds normal, yeah. Um, the coverage level, let's say we waive this and we get sued, do, does CD Mick cover us past a certain number?
No, we wouldn't be covered, we wouldn't be covered.
Never covered at all?
At all, correct. That's why you have to have the special insurance that covers intellectual property, all other policies exclude intellectual property claims.
So there's, there's a couple other options too. Can, we could buy the insurance ourselves, or the tourism board could buy the insurance for themselves, that would be an option?
Nine thousand a year?
Hey, or we, they have to buy it and we can pay a difference, or they can walk and we go to bid again. Or, or, or you could go to a second, the second bid, right? What was the second bid?
There were three firms we interviewed.
Oh, oh, you didn't get bids from, there were, it was an RFQ?
They were different, they were different.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's not apples to apples, there's.
I guess what I'm saying is that the, the risk involved versus the cost for the extra insurance, we could require it of the consultant, we could buy it ourselves.
Or you could waive it.
Or we could waive it, but I, I, I can see, I mean, you see the weirdest things people sue for, you know, um.
Mr. Chair?
Patents and branding and, I don't know. I, I don't wanna stall it, but at the same time, you know, if, if we're that worried about it, I, I feel better if we have the insurance either through them or on our own. Does CD Mick offer that insurance?
Alderman Weigel? Alderman Weigel?
I guess, I asked a question though.
Oh, sure.
Did the SIFMIC offer the?
Intellectual property?
I, I have no idea if they do, I, I would doubt it because municipalities aren't typically.
Cause the risk is so high.
We're not creating property.
There's no insured to sell that product too, so I would doubt it.
Yeah, Alderman Weigel?
So I guess, I'm on the tourism commission, part of the selection process, I know, yes, we're behind, we should be this, you know, we should be months ahead of where we are. My question is, what exactly would we be accused of stealing? A, a three-word phrase? And, and I guess. I guess if when the time comes that this intellectual property is generated, if we just assigned a staffer to go Google that and see if Beaver Dam is using it? Or is this some sort of trade secret thing that they, you know, I mean, I, I guess I don't know how that works?
What typically happens is, we wouldn't be accused of stealing, we'd be accused of that it was stolen from us. We don't care whether you did it or you hired somebody who did it, cease and desist, stop using it, don't do it. And then we, we either have to continue on and risk getting sued for the copyright violation or stop it, and then so what we paid for, we don't get to use any longer, and we'd have to contract with either the same firm or somebody else to create a brand-new thing that was not in violation of it. What the intellectual property coverage does is it ensures that what we have purchased, we will get, whether it's the one that they first gave us or the one they had to redo. We, we get it, up to the million dollars.
I'd really like to see this go forward. And our contract with them would be a multi, I mean, it waits in vision, this is not just a one-year contract with this firm, this is gonna be a multi-year relationship.
Mayor Devine, you would want to say something?
I think that was kind of, it's kind of been answered, I'm not worried about us being sued, I'm worried about us getting this brand and, and this process, and you know, uh comes up with West Al's Heart of it All, and then all of a sudden.
Heartland goes.
Wait a second, wait.
Yeah, Hartford or Heartland comes up with the same slogan, which in, in my opinion, they, they would look kinda foolish, cause it's just, it would be like a a microbrewery opening up a, you know, a tap line with a light beer called Les Finlay, tastes great, I mean, it's, you look like a fool, in my opinion, but I, you know, I just, this has not been required in Savage's efforts in other communities. I can't speak to what other communities have hired firms that were not Savage Solutions. But, you know, like, uh, Oak Creek and Waukesha are the two that I can, I'm most familiar with, cause I know their mayors and I know their employees, and they've had a really stellar reputation in those communities as far as their work.
Alderman Chapuski?
I, I go back to the very beginning where it was right in there that you have to require, that you're required to have this, and they didn't do it. You know, so which, which makes me a little suspect why? You know, cause i- if they looked at it and said, well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna take that cost on it, they didn't have to, you know, bid on it. You know, and uh, once again, we're jumping out there, jumping out of plane with our parachute. Not really in favor, I understand the time factor, but uh, you know, how big the risk is, I don't think we know.
Well, I think we do know the risk, it's essentially what we're paying them to create the brand, in case we are given a cease and desist order on our brand.
Yeah, I would think so, this is not McDonald's and Burger King where they're fighting over billions of dollars in profits, this is I think the, the worst-case scenario is cease and desist and we have nothing, and have to go back and re- rebid that, so either this contract price or something slightly more is what the risk legitimately is here, I, I don't see how we would get sued for the millions or billions of dollars because we, we sn- now, because we took something with the heart in it, and, and now, how have we ruined that city in the western part of the state or in the southeast part of the country? I, I don't see the damages there.
But it's more than just having the slogan and stuff, it's putting, spending the money to put it on trucks or branding material
Yeah, that's.
and things like that, that you're gonna have to go back and redo, redo it all over again. You know, if, if we really feel we want this, and, and the, we really want this consultant, and they're saying they're gonna walk, I have the tourism board pony up the extra money for the insurance. Is, is the way I'd go with it.
Well, the, the vision for the, the funding of this whole marketing program isn't just, you know, what we call hotel room tax, there'll be taxpayer money in it also. So this is not money, new money to us, this is, we're talking about taxpayer money.
There was also some, I think a hundred thousand dollars from fire.
Fire.
So there's, there is some funding available outside of the tourism commission, if you have us go to the tourism commission, we'll have to convene a meeting and do that, not that we can't do that, but that delays us more, so.
And, and, and this would be a recurring expense, if we waive it, then conceivably where we'd waive it every year of the contract, I assume. You know, but if we, if we decide to somehow find the money to pay for it, I assume we'd be deciding to pay it for it every year, and insurance rates usually go up or down.
Mr. Chair? I think too, if we get this seed planted, every year we do this branding, it's gonna get stronger, and it's gonna be less likely that somebody else is gonna wanna try to use a slogan or a brand that we already are running with, especially in the geographic area.
In our market.
Now, I don't, you know, Savage is a small operation in southeastern Wisconsin. I don't know how far they go out, outside of the state, if at all. I don't even remember how many employees they have, but it's, it's not a ton.
Eleven, maybe.
Mr. Post?
Yeah, as I sit here and contemplate Alderman May's proposal, I don't think it's proper to, to spend our money on that. I think your two choices are waiver of it, don't, don't have them require it or require it, and either make them pay for it or they want. And the reason why is it's the, uh, you know, the doctrine of, of the public funds doctrine, and we would be spending eight or nine or ten thousand dollars. And the reason why is it's the uh you know, the doctrine of of the public funds doctrine and we would be spending eight or nine or ten thousand dollars to buy this company, their intellectual property insurance, how does that benefit, it doesn't. We would, then every other company would say, pay for my insurance too, uh and so we can't spend our funds to do that. We can either require them like we did in the R F P or we waive it, I don't think we can s- expend public funds to pay for their insurance policy.
And Mr. Chair?
Yep, to that, I think we always do pay for the insurance policy.
And and through their bid, but this is a different situation.
Right, right, because we've already been given the bid.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just a way it lines up, that that would then do that.
Yep. I'm a little more risk averse, I guess. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I guess piggybacking on what the city's attorney says, you know, I guess the question is, when the other bidders gave us their price, did they include the insurance cost? And so is it possible that Savage gave us an artificially low price because they didn't include their insurance cost in it? I mean, that would be a question for us to go to the other bidders and go, you know, or maybe, and again, nine thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money to me for this.
Mr. Chair?
Twenty percent.
Yes, Ms. Grill.
I think the basis for the selection wasn't.
Just on money, I understand it, yes, no, we like, we like their product, we like their 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 feel, or, yeah.
It was, that was not one of the considerations.
I would suggest we can self-insure, we can pay ourselves nine thousand dollars each year and that would cover what the risk we're 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 taking on here. I'm kind of being, I would actually say, put it that into a pot, but and and save that for a rainy day, but really, that's what we're looking at here.
So you're saying waive?
I'm saying waive, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Well, and, well, just to the audience, not maybe the whole audience, just to the audience.
Because I was unclear. Yeah. Yeah. Right, so uh we don't have a jacket on this, so we don't have a specific uh motion or anything, I'm looking for the cons- this is a discussion matter. Yeah, I'm looking for the consensus of the group.
I I would go with waive.
No.
I wouldn't want to waive it. No, I don't want to waive it either.
We don't have a consensus.
Mr. Chair, I think to to get me over that.
Yeah.
Can we check with an insurance company and we maybe we just.
Get some quotes.
Cover our own butts.
There is such thing, yeah.
Ensure ourselves, then I might be more willing to waive, and if we could have this all sorted out within a couple of weeks, I would think. Wouldn't this just be a rider, we could add to our existing policy with our current insurer, would you say?
If if they offer it, I I've got my doubts that they offer that.
I mean, either way, there's nothing we can approve as a council tonight.
No. No, but if you if you all were to to agree that we would waive it just within a couple of weeks, fire type type thing where you say, go ahead and enter the contract, that's fine, because you know, that's that's how we've handled these things in the past, but we don't have that consensus, so.
Mr. Chair? Hold on one. On the, I don't know what you call it, the public money doctrine, whatever about us having to buy it. Would it matter if the money came from, say, the FIRE funding source?
No, FIRE is a wholly owned corporation owned by the C D A and the city, it's it's a an alter ego of us, they have to comply with the open meetings over there, it's law, we control them completely, so we we couldn't avoid the law by creating a corporation. No more than than the licenses and health?
Yeah, again. Alright, so uh we're gonna ask the city attorney to get us some air gas from Ms. Grill to uh get us some information about uh insurance, okay, and then we'll revisit this issue. Alright.
And and Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigl.
Can we reach out to the other, the other, at least two of the other agencies that bid with us and ask them if if this is something they've run into? I mean, again, clearly if it was in our R F P and if, how did they miss it or didn't care?
I think we have a city attorney who's doing a good job of paying attention to things, I think that might be the difference with those communities.
It's not, I wouldn't enjoy talking to S I D M E C on coverages, but Ms. Grill is the one who is the.
And the representative.
She's representative with S I D M E C.
She's going on. And she's really good at that.
Yeah.
Represent.
Alright, um I don't have anything further properly before administration of finance, so kind of a motion to adjourn? We, that's for, not for us.
See where it's in the same development?
Yeah. Thank you, I wasn't sure myself when you said that, so thank you. Um, you have a motion to adjourn? The second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.